All right, good evening, and it's a great evening. We have a very full house tonight. I am calling the February 5th, 2025 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting to Order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There we go. I love that out there. They know what they're doing. All right. Our next item is roll call, so we'll let our Clerk do the roll.
Councilmember Olson, Councilmember Claussen, Councilmember Thede, Councilmember Garza, Mayor Bailey.
Here. Next on our agenda this evening is open forum. This is the opportunity for somebody to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda, and we did have a sign-up sheet out in the entryway, but no one did sign up. So in the event that somebody made it in here and wants to speak to us, if you just raise your hand or let me know. All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close open forum and move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda.
Well, we have a motion by Councilmember Claussen, a second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Now we come to the fun stuff. Number six is presentations. Our first presentation this evening is Acacia? Acacia, thank you. Acacia, I was just gonna say Masonic Lodge. Acacia, Masonic Lodge number 51 donation and presentation, and our Director of Public Safety Pete Kerner is gonna kind of start us through this, and then Council, if you want to join me down in front of the council desk.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Council. Yeah, it's an honor to be up here to accept a donation. I'm glad you butchered their name first, so I'm just gonna say Masonic Lodge 51, because I've asked like 19 times how to pronounce it. But we're happy to have them back. They're here a year ago, and they had donated last year six of the fire suppression devices. Kind of their goal was to get them in all the squads, and now we're gonna be up to 12 of them, and so there's six more tonight. They're valued at $1,000 apiece. And I can tell you, right after the first donation came in to the sheriff's office, I know one of the deputies went to a house fire. We talked about it last year, and were able to deploy it and cut way less damage, so the fire department was able to put it out. So we really appreciate this donation. I'm not gonna babble on and on, because they have a brief introduction on it too, and what their clubs or the lodges about. So go ahead.
There you go. I'll hand it up to you.
Thank you, Chief and Mr. Mayor. Lloyd Chaney, I'm the current master of Acacia Lodge number 51, Masonic Lodge. And a little bit about Acacia Lodge, we've been in Old Cottage Grove since 1865. So it was founded by a lot of the farmers in the area and a lot of veterans that came home right after the Civil War. So the First and Second Minnesota guys were founders within our lodge. So lots of history in our lodge. If you go past it, we've done a lot of renovations to that old building. It was the first congressional church from 1865 until 1965, and our lodge was down, oh, about half mile down the road and off tucked away down there. But when the members of that church, some of the guys were in the lodge, they purchased the building and the church built a new structure and a new church, and we have been there ever since. So it's been around for, this is our 160th year, and we're in a 160-year-old building, which is pretty darn cool. And so, without further ado, we have Brother Mitch Boren, Brother Rich Purcell, and Brother Jeff Leonardson, and myself. We'd have more guys here, but this is a Scottish Rite night, so a lot of our guys are in degrees over in St. Paul tonight. The FST, so this is the device itself, and it comes in the case and can be deployed. So a police officer will come, or a first responder will come and see maybe a smoke in a structure, a fire, or whatever, and there's a pin device here. You clip it, pull a pin, and you toss it into the structure in the fire, and it will go from basically 1,000 degrees down to below the flashpoint in a matter of seconds. It is not CO2. It's safe for all humans and animals in the building. In fact, it was at St. Paul Park, or?
The house was in St. Paul Park.
The house was in St. Paul Park. I think it was last February, and there was a save, and it saved the animals in the building. And of course, the structure itself will not burn down. The fire department will buy the time to get there to extinguish the remaining fire. So this program was first started by Minnesota Grand Lodge and Minnesota Masonic Charities. They're right around $1,000 each. The lodge puts forth a portion of that money. Minnesota Masonic Charities and Grand Lodge puts the rest, and then we donate to our local city fire and police. So with that, we have, this will make it 12, and we'll try to get your, all your squad cars outfitted going forward, and we'll do one more final donation, I think, if we can, by the end of the year. That would be great. We'll see where our fundraising is, but we do a lot of fundraising throughout the year. And that not only goes, I mean, our events, the spaghetti dinner, which you guys come to, our pancake breakfasts, which are wonderful, and we also do a raffle every year, sportsman and more raffle, where we take a bunch of stuff, raffle it off, and that contributes to our funds. And also, we raise money for our scholarships. So there are scholarships that are available for local students in the high schools, and also Minnesota Masonic Charities puts out scholarships, not only for new post-secondary options, but other education as well. So if you're looking, if you're a young person, or you have young people at home, or people looking for scholarships, ask the city council. I'll leave some, my cards. You can contact me, and I will point you in the right direction. So I think I covered all that. I think I covered this. I will make the presentation, and maybe we can get a photo there. Super. And we thank you. We love the community. We love being here. And if you're looking for a good pancake breakfast, Easter Saturday, Saturday before Easter, come out. We're also doing Easter egg hunt for the kids, and if it's not nice weather, we'll have it inside the lodge. Our picnic is August 19th, I believe. You're all welcome to come to our picnic and our spaghetti dinner in the fall, so.
Fantastic. So let's give them a round of applause for this amazing donation. And as he just mentioned, their spaghetti dinner is absolutely amazing. I don't know what it is in the recipe, but it is very, very good. So I think basically all of us, well, we have our new council member, so that'll be coming, so we'll do that. But again, on behalf of all of us, our citizens and everybody, I mean, it's groups like yourself that make this community an amazing place to live and work and play. And the fact is, is that if we didn't have some of these types of devices, obviously, we'd have homes that could, like you referenced the one in St. Paul Park, that could, in essence, burn to the ground or injure people. These are some neat new devices that will obviously get in all of our squads at some point, and I, again, just want to thank you from all of us in the city of Cottage Grove and our public safety teams, both police, fire, EMS, and of course, the council. Sounds good. Thank you.
Oh, let's stay down. Okay, we're staying down, council. Council? Yay, we're staying down here. There we go. So before we move to the second item, which is why a bunch of these people are here tonight, to make it official, I do need somebody to make a motion to accept the donations from the Masonic. And you did it right, Lodge 51.
52.
51. Yeah, see, we didn't have our sheets in front of us. We're doing it out here. So we have a motion by Councilmember Thede, a second by Councilmember Garza. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. May that official then. So next on our agenda this evening is an amazing evening, is we're going to be swearing in some police officers, and so we'll stay up in the front here. I know our Director of Public Safety Pete Kerner is gonna kick this off, and then obviously, our city administrator will be administering the oath.
Mayor, Council, if you could shift this way. I'm gonna have the officers kind of before. They can shift down just a little bit more, so when we... Just be a moment. Thank you.
I do want to also acknowledge that our County Commissioner Carla Bingham's here, and I know some of the different Sheriff Starry and his group are here this evening too, so we want to welcome them to Cottage Grove.
so we want to welcome them to Cottage Grove.
All right, well, we'll kick this off. I actually wrote a couple of notes this time, 'cause this is just a monumental thing for us to bring on four new officers, and when I say new, they're not brand-new. It's been a year's coming to get them to this point, so. But I'm really proud to just stand in front of you to introduce our four officers here. And when I said newest, last week, we have three additional ones that started last week in the academy, and three CSO candidates, so. These four here, they went through their field training, and they went through their, the Officer Academy. Sergeant Lindine was gonna come up and talk, but she just said, in the interest of time, that she asked me just to mention that, so. But each of these four officers were sworn in on their first day. However, this is our time to celebrate them successfully completing our police academy and field training. Each of these officers is already out on their own and making contributions to the organization. As their family members tonight pin their badge, I just want to take this moment to remind each of us what this badge represents. This badge represents our vision of the Cottage Grove Police Department and our core values. This badge represents the trust that the public has in us. It represents our commitment to the profession and our community. Each of these officers up here display our core values of integrity, humility, respect, courage, honor, professionalism, initiative, and wellness, and this badge is just more of a reminder of that. As police officers, you also represent the Public Safety Department, our entire profession, our city organization, and most importantly, the community. With that, I'm gonna do one introduction at a time. We'll get each of up, and then have family come up and pin the badge, so. We'll start with Officer Loudon Renzel, if you wanna come over by the city administrator. And I do have to admit, I did play around with your bios. Some of you were short, Officer Freeman. He did a trooper report for me, so, but. But no, I just do a brief introductions, but especially proud of this one. Loudon grew up in Cottage Grove and Tennant Park High School, where he met his wife Jasmine. Loudon grew up in our law enforcement family as well. His father Greg has served over thirty years and currently our deputy director. I can tell you Loudon earned this position. His dad actually has taken another role, so he didn't supervise him, so that's, it's pretty neat. But Loudon started his career as a reserve officer for Cottage Grove, then he also transitioned to be in a community service officer with us, and while doing that, he also worked part-time with Woodbury Public Safety as a, as a CSO, while he attended the law enforcement school. Loudon was hired as a deputy with Washington County about five years ago. He worked in patrol. He was a SWAT member and a field training officer. Had a great experience there, but he returned home, so we're grateful for that. Loudon is currently our traffic enforcement officer, so I'm sure you've seen him out on some of the social media posts. Loudon has his two children here, and his wife Jasmine will pin his badge after the city administrator administers the oath, so.
All right, Loudon.
I keep spelling those names.
Repeat after me, and then raise your right hand.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Loudon G. Renzel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
For the city of Cottage Grove.
For the city of Cottage Grove.
And the county of Washington.
The county of Washington.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Nope, now we can put your badge.
All right, next we have Officer Anna Weiss. Another officer that grew up in a law enforcement family. Anna grew up in Forest Lake and graduated from Forest Lake High School. After high school, Anna knew what her passion, I think even during high school, you knew your passion. She went on to attend Alexandria Technical and Community College. While she was there at school, she was hired here as a community service officer, so she made the many, many weekends to work as a CSO with us, and when she completed her schooling, she continued as a CSO. She went through our process, was selected, and began last year on February fifth, I believe, so you're out. Anna also enjoys spending time with her family, being active, and traveling, so congratulations. In a moment, we'll have your dad, retired Captain Greg Weiss, come up, so.
All right, Anna, raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye.
Hi, Anna L. Weiss.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
For the city of Cottage Grove.
For the city of Cottage Grove.
And the county of Washington.
And the county of Washington.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Remember how to use this?
Baggy.
Baggy.
Do we have paramedics on the road?
I'll get a picture in before you leave. All right. I'm gonna have to go off script a little bit, 'cause like I said, when I asked him for a bio, it was like, been a cop, air, let's do this, so. All right, like I said, man a few words, but Marshall is also local. He grew up in St. Paul Park, where he later graduated from Park High School. After school, Marshall joined the United States Air Force and did eight years of active duty. I think part of that time, you're a K-9 handler as well. After that, he came back to Cottage Grove. Marshall is currently a member of the Air National Guard. Prior to coming to us, he worked for three years with the Minnesota State Patrol, and he worked in the East Metro. I know the poor guy, every call he went on or coffee breaks, he was heavily recruited, and even, even a neighbor, I think, pressured him to, to come on board, so. Again, like I said, Marshall man a few words, but when I talked about our core values, the one was the humility. And just a quick story, as a member of the Lions Club, I had someone track me down, one of the coaches from, he was at Kingston, and he said, hey, one of your cops showed up. I'm like, oh, gosh, what did we do? You know, that was my first thought, and then they just, they gave me the, you know, one of your officers, and it turned out to be Marshall, stopped, and there was a soccer practice with like twelve-year-olds, and he played with them for about fifteen minutes, and I think they scored quite a few times on you, but they definitely, they wanted to pass it along, and when I saw Marshall in the hallway, I was like, hey, I got this nice, and he's like, yeah, that's why I came here, chief. You know, he wants to do that community engagement, so we're really excited to have you. I hope I get this right, because I said, who's, he's like, yeah, the wife and kids will be here too, but Marshall's wife, Olivia, will be pinning your badge, and your children will be coming up as well, so. With that, I'll turn it over to the city administrator.
All right, Marshall, raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Marshall D. Freeman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
For the city of Cottage Grove.
For the city of Cottage Grove.
And the county of Washington.
And the county of Washington.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Oh, I love his shirts.
His brother's standing.
Yeah, it works.
Last but not least, I'll tell you, if we could contain his energy, we'd solve the energy crisis, right, Tyler? So, next, proud to introduce Officer Tyler Harris. Tyler was raised in New Richmond, Wisconsin, and is a graduate of New Richmond High School. He began his career in law enforcement as a police explorer with the Washington County Sheriff's Office. His commitment to public service continued when he enlisted in the United States Marine Corps, where he currently serves as a military police officer in the Marine Corps Reserves. In May of twenty twenty-two, Tyler joined the city of Cottage Grove as a community service officer while pursuing his education at Century College, where he earned an associate degree in law enforcement. During his studies, he also served as a firefighter for the city of New Richmond as a community service officer of the Washington County Sheriff's Office, and he further advanced his training by completing his skills program at Rasmussen University. In June of last year, he began his role as a police officer with our department. So, he's one of those unique candidates that we wanted him so bad. We hired him when he was finishing his training. He started with the academy right away, and then once he became post-eligible, he started as a, as a police officer, so. He's another one that didn't listen to his family. His dad's a proud commander with Washington County, so. We have, we have three that didn't listen to their parents tonight, but with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer Lovett.
All right, Tyler, raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Tyler T. Harris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
For the city of Cottage Grove.
For the city of Cottage Grove.
And the county of Washington.
And the county of Washington.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So.
With that, Tyler, is your mom coming up too?
Yes.
Tyler's mother Heather and father Tim. It's Father Tim, not Father. I just promoted you right there, so. And we would love to have a chance with all the families to come up here with the officers that were just sworn in, with the officers in the backdrop too, so. Families?
Families, you wanna come on up then? We'll do a big group picture here.
I'll stand more in the back. Officers, if you wanna kinda scrounge up behind them and get two rolls up there, maybe, or...
All right, let's do one more round of applause for our new officers here in Cottage Grove.
Thank you. Give me that, that's scary.
Nine years or six months from now.
I heard her in a mod, what she was saying. I know, she was gonna lead the staff meeting, and... Much longer.
I'm back next week.
Next week? I love it. Yeah, this is it. Thank you. Yeah, I love that. Oh, nice, thank you.
That is the cutest.
Thank you. Just wait a minute, as they're moving their way out.
A lot of proud parents this evening and family members. Let's see if we can maybe get those doors shut. There we go, one, there goes the other, okay.
All righty. Then our final item under presentations this evening is February twenty twenty-five, which is Black History Month, and before I ask for a motion in a second, I did ask Councilmember Clausen to read the proclamation this evening, so I'll let you kick it off.
The proclamation, whereas Black History Month is a time to reflect upon, honor, and celebrate the invaluable contributions of African-Americans throughout history and the ongoing efforts to promote equality, justice, and freedom. Whereas in nineteen twenty-six, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a Harvard scholar, established the observance of African history month, excuse me, of African-American history to reveal the contributions, achievements, and involvement of African-American people and the development of our American democracy. Whereas African-Americans have played a vital role in shaping the culture, economic, and social fabric of the United States, enriching our communities with their resilience, strength, and achievements in every field. Whereas Minnesota is home to many prominent black trailblazers, including Dr. Robert S. Brown, the first black doctor in Minnesota, Lena Smith, Minnesota's first black woman lawyer, Neva Walker, the first black woman elected to the Minnesota Legislature. The proclamation continues, whereas the city of Cottage Grove remains committed to acknowledging the generations of African-Americans who struggled against adversity, injustice, and discrimination in order to achieve equal rights in American society. And whereas Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to the democratic ideals, we must reflect upon our collective past, reveal its impact on present conditions, and implement equitable solutions for more, for a more just future. And whereas the city of Cottage Grove is proud to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our community throughout the state and nation. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of Cottage Grove, county of Washington, state of Minnesota hereby proclaim the month of February twenty twenty-five to be designated as Black History Month.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Clausen. So, with that reading, I'll take a motion and a second to make it official.
I'll make a motion to proclaim February twenty twenty-five as Black History Month.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Garza, second by Councilmember Thede.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you for reading that. Awesome. Next on our agenda is consent. Is there anything council wants to pull from consent for a separate discussion this evening?
No.
Okay, seeing none, I guess at this point, I'll look, all right, there we go. We have a motion, but Councilmember Thede, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clausen. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. So, if anybody was here for anything on tonight's consent agenda, all of those items have been approved. Next on our agenda, moving right along, is eight is approved dispersment, which is paying the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Garza, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Councilmember Clausen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Nine is public hearings, we have none this evening. Ten is bid awards, we have none this evening. Eleven is regular agenda, nothing on our regular agenda this evening, so we are all the way down to council...
So we are all the way down to council comments and requests, and I'll still stay with my normal. And I'll start with Councilmember Garza down here. Anything you want to add?
Well, let's see. I don't have anything, but I do see that we're having a fish fry at Royal Oaks on February 28th, so I think everybody should get down there and enjoy some great fish. Other than that, you guys have a wonderful week.
There you go. All right, Councilmember Thede.
Well, let's see, I guess sticking with, with my general theme of Strawberry Fest and so forth, there, there is a purse bingo fundraiser and that at River Oaks on February 22nd at 11:00 a.m. And other information is available at, online at strawberryfest.com. And other than that, I'm good.
All right. I was just going to real quick say that I've seen the picture of the button for this year. Looks amazing, by the way. I know you talked about it in the past, but I've seen it out on social media now, so it's whoever designed it did a really good job, so. Fun button for this year. Fantastic. And then Councilmember Clausen.
Everybody loves software upgrades, right? We all look forward to those. Well, over the last week or several months, our finance department and utility billing people have been working diligently to get a new utility software system up and running. I know that takes a lot of people. It takes finance, IT, the utility people, and to get everything working on time. And throughout the change, I know the staff has been receiving like upwards of, this last week, 500 phone calls from citizens asking about having, just questions on how to navigate the news system. But anyway, it's a lot of time. It's a lot to ask the staff to do, and it seems to be going pretty well from what I hear. So shout out to the staff and everyone that works so hard on that. Thank you.
Fantastic, yep. And that is true. And what the great news about that is it's more, the questions were more about, do I need to reset up my account? Which obviously, the answer was yes. So if you're watching, that is the answer. But nice job in the transition.
I can say that setting up your account, it's extremely fast and easy. It takes a couple of minutes, not a problem. Pay your bills, set it on automatic payment, and forget about it.
You know, it's funny because that's what my, I asked my wife the same question. I said, oh, by the way, did you know you have to do this? She said, of course I knew. I'm like, okay, as long as it's done, I didn't care. So I don't have anything else to add for this evening at this point, so we'll just move... Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Thede.
I guess we can mention, I guess there's the Blizzard Bash.
Oh, go ahead.
Down at Ravine Park, and that's on February 15th. So that's week, not this weekend, the weekend after, right? And, and we might even have, if, if everything comes down from the sky on Saturday and so forth, we might even have some, some snow to take advantage of their free use of snowshoes and sleds and, and you strap on the skis and things like that. So that's on February 15th from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Ravine Park.
Awesome, thank you. So the next item on our agenda is workshops, which are open to the public, which we'll end up going into, I'm assuming the training room, correct? We do have three items on our, our workshop this evening. One is the Minnesota Law Enforcement Support Office, which is the less goal participation. The second one is the annual use of force update or report for the police. And then the third one is the police and fire five-year strategic plan update. We do not have any workshops closed to the public this evening, so we won't be adjourning in here. We'll adjourn in the, in the training room. So everybody have a great evening, and we'll see if we get that snow this weekend. So take care, everyone.